Last time we tried to pass the microphone around, that really didn't work too well for the town hall meeting. So if you don't mind coming up here, that'll work much better. The engineers will be right here, you address them, also the public, and speak indirectly to them. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Tom Schreiner. Thank you, Tom.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tom Schreiner, Deputy CIO of Public Works for the City of Kenner. And I want to start this off and give you some brief, a brief summary of what's happened on this project. We have other members here, the design team and construction team, we have members of the parish here, and also our DOTD friends sitting in the front row right here. This project includes the enclosing of canals on both Canal Number Two and West Esplanade. We're all familiar with that. We've all seen this thing evolving. It's very close to completion. And just so you know, that this enclosure of the canal has been priority of Jefferson Parish and other municipalities for many years. And this is just one step in the process. Process started in, back in 2014, with the city signed a contract with NY Associates, and the process started there, and that was basically the design process. Design continued, and it included close coordination with DOTD. Plans were prepared for their, excuse me, were their specifications, and finally, the project was bid in 2019. Hard rock construction was the low bidder, 11.9 million was the low bid, and construction began in June of 2019. Project was originally scheduled to be completed in 2021, and we're here to talk about some of the things that happened that prolonged the closing, the completion of the project. There's 505 working days, which, as we said, should have been complete by the summer of last year, but we now are saying that the project will be substantially complete, we like to say substantially complete, by May, early part of May. Substantially means that you will have full operation of the box, and that will have traffic in two ways on West Esplanade. Now that we're in construction, we're gonna turn it over to Richard Lambert, Mr. Arthur Ladette. He'll go through some things, and he'll tell you a little bit about what's happened along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. As everybody knows, this was a very large, complicated project in the City of Kenner. I would like to point out that the means and methods that were used by the contractor to build the job is part of the contractor. We have very limited power to tell him how to build the job. During the course of this project as well, we were met with very unprecedented stuff. You know, we had COVID. We battled through two hurricanes and countless rain events. Every time it rained, there was alarms that went off, there were coordination that was needed. It's been a very unsettling thing that we had to deal with throughout this, with all the alerts and being all hands on deck when a rain event happened. Earth and dams were included on this project. They were meant to isolate the work areas, so the work could be performed in a canal. That is a standard that's pretty much included in every Jefferson Parish canal project. This contractor decided to go a different route, and that would be one of his main, biggest delays, is he pulled off the project, regrouped, redid his plan, and then executed said plan and deployed said plan. Once again, I point that out, that it wasn't us, we don't have the power to tell him how to do his job or how to do the project. We have a duty to how the permanent structure is built, has nothing to do with the temporary structure at all. To date, as we sit here, the concrete for the box culvert is complete, all of it has been poured. He is now cleaning the dam, cleaning the box culvert out, all the material is being removed, all the dirt and material that was in the canal, it's being, it's being, in the box, it's being removed. And he will then move on to building the eastbound portion of the roadway, and will open the roadway, like Mr. Tom said, in the coming weeks. Once, once that's completed, and we move a little bit past that, we'll do a final inspection walkthrough. Once he gets, you know, 99.9% of his stuff done, we'll then compile a punch list, and he'll have to address every item that we deem insufficient, and that includes the bump in the westbound direction. It is being addressed, and it will be taken care of. That's really a brief overview of what I have, and I guess Tom will give back to Mr. Tom.
Okay, at this point, we'll entertain some questions. If y'all have any questions, y'all want to address, well, depends on what your question is, we'll have someone answer your question. Thank you. Susie, we had his hands up. NY Associates designed the project. Their contract is with the city. Yes, sir. Is, yes, he's with Richard Lambert Consultants? Arthur Ladette, that's correct. Yes. Inspections are every day. There's a, there's a man on, on job, on the job site every day. When the contractor's working, he's out there.
What's the reason for the bump in the westbound lane?
We're, we're looking into that, and I don't know if you've noticed, we've milled the surface down to provide a smoother surface, and we'll look into that. That'll be addressed as, in the, it'll be a punch list item, and we'll handle that. But it will be addressed. It was, it was bid at 11, 11,900,000. We're at about 12.6 right now, where it's a 50/50 split between the city and the state.
Okay, I'm trying, I don't, I'm trying to figure out. The cost was 11.9 on June 13th, when they announced it would start on June 17th, correct, to 2019. Now, now what's the new estimate?
It's not an estimate. The construction has been, by change orders, been increased to 12,600.
12.6, and Kent, the residents of Kenner are gonna pay half of the difference, correct?
That's correct.
How is that acceptable? Is it, was there any incentive to the company to finish on time? What incentives were built in?
That, that provision wasn't a part of this contract.
So how are the citizens held responsible for overtime or whatever, waste of time? I'm trying to figure this out. On May 26, 2021, Mayor's Arm was nice enough to give us an update on a video, sent to the whole entire community, saying that the project was gonna be hopefully completed in the fall of that year, 2021. What's happened since then? How come no, Tom, let me ask you this. The reports I got from council people are that when calls from the construction company were coming in to your office, texts, calls, emails, not answered. Yeah, is that true?
I don't believe that's true. I don't recall not responding to anything. You're talking about me individually or our office? No, we, we respond to all the texts or calls, whatever they are.
And Tom, this is in person, but who's overseeing your office?
Who's office? I report to the CIO, Deborah Fochi.
Okay. I'm saying, who's, who's overseeing the City of Kenner in this project?
We have a, we have a, I'm sorry, we have a consultant that's handling everything on the project. All, all the reporting to DOTD, they're on site every day, they prepare the necessary reports, and I oversee that.
Tom, let me, let me ask you this. You said, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, that the project's been 500 days? Is that right?
These are working days, yes.
Okay, but it's more than 1,000, it's almost 1,300 days that we're talking about here. No, I'm sorry, 1,200, let's say just 1,200. Because I don't, on the airport people, construction, different projects, they work in seven days a week. How many days have actual workers been on the job of the 500 days that you said?
I don't have that, that number.
Well, I can tell you. It's a lot less than that. There's been weeks and months where it hasn't been one person on the job. It's not a reflection of anybody in this room. I'm just saying, that's the facts.
Well, the contractor did walk off the job at one point, and we had to order them to come back.
They also didn't cut the grass. Remember how high the weeds were, 12, 12 feet high? You couldn't even see on either side of the roads? Who's responsible for that?
The contractor was, is, and was responsible.
So I'm not sure, if they walked off the job, how are the citizens responsible for paying half of the overtime or misappropriation of money, I would say, or just inconceivable work? How, how is the citizens responsible?
That's all gonna be addressed with, we've deferred assessing liquidated damages until the end of the project. That'll be addressed in the very next couple of months.
So in other words, we're gonna be seeking legal steps to recover the money?
We may.
It's not we may, we need to. Why are we, why are we having to pay extra money? We have nothing to do with this. And not only that, let me give you something else. If we spend five minutes a day, Tom, let me address this. If we spend five minutes extra per day in that traffic, never mind fuel costs, I figured it out. It's 85 hours, five minutes a day, over this last two years, plus 10 months of sitting in that traffic. It's ridiculous. You're one person, I know that. But I'm saying that the company has to be, it has to pay restitution for something. Yeah, let him speak.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Peter Trifly Jr. I'm with Simone Perigene Law Firm. I'm outside counsel to the city. With regard to your question, and I think you're talking about recovering amounts from the contractor, am I understanding that correctly?
This is what I'm saying. I don't know why Kenner has to issue them a check, period, from us, when it's their problem. They're incompetent, obviously. They walked off the job. You kidding me?
Well, let me just interrupt you.
Yeah, do interrupt me.
These are complicated projects. The city is still gonna avail itself of its remedies under the contract if they have the right to do so. For example, the contract provides for liquidated damages if the contractor has passed the contract time. The contractor has submitted a plan change, which is a change order request, for additional time related to differing issues on the project. Those plan change requests are still in process. They have to be reviewed by the design team, by the City of Kenner, by the DOTD, and go all, through all of those layers of approval. So if the plan change is approved by all those layers, then the contractor would be entitled to additional time. If the plan change is not approved, then the contractor would be responsible for LDs, for liquidated damages.
So is the contract approved?
Excuse me?
Was the contract approved?
What, the plan change, I think you're saying? The plan change is still in process. It's still being reviewed by the different entities.
Okay, let me ask you this, too. A group that I'm with researched and found that, I'm not sure, is there any truth to the matter that, I'm, I'm asking you now, before we bring it up, the Department of Transportation, did they say, indicate that that piece of property was gonna be safe once the bridge was built?
Did the department say that it was not going to be safe?
Yeah, I'm asking you.
I'm, I'm not aware of any determination by the department that it's not gonna be safe.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know why the contractor walked off the job site, or is that Tom's question?
That would be a question.
Okay, well, I'd stay there for a second.
Sure.
You said the penalty provision, the liquidated damages, if they have the right to do so, meaning Kenner, what would trigger that if they have the right to do so?
So the, the contract is governed by the DOTD standard specifications. There are, it's called purple books, 1,200 pages long. So there are different, different reasons that the contractor could be entitled to additional time or additional money. It could be any number, any number of things, whether there's a differing site conditions, and again, I'm just giving these as examples. So if the contractor was entitled, if it's ultimately determined that the contractor is entitled to additional time, then the, the original contract time will be extended by that number of days, and there wouldn't, would not be liquidated damages assessed.
Is there anything else that might trigger the liquidated damages?
Liquidated damages only relates to contract time.
Just contract time?
That's correct.
And may I ask, how much is Simone Perigene charging the city per hour?
I honestly do not.
You're, you're their attorney?
That's correct. I'm, I'm, I don't have the contract in front of me, so I honestly, and I don't know offhand.
Do you know if the contract also calls for attorney's fees and penalties? Not penalties, excuse me. Attorney's fees and costs, if you have to file suit against the contractor?
I don't know the, the DOTD specifications offhand, but I, I believe that it's.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tom?
Real quick, I was piggybacking on your question. Why did the contractor pull off the job for that extended two to three months? It was due to him not being able to, in his words, safely construct the sand dams. So he pulled back, regrouped, and I think I addressed this a little bit earlier. He pulled back, came up with a plan, and executed said plan. That's why he pulled off. It's not my opinion. It's, it's his, the contractor's. Yes, sir.
Do you call walking off the job the same thing as pausing to regroup?
That's what I'm calling it in that instance, yes, ma'am. What, what, what he did, I mean, he pulled off the job because he didn't know what he was gonna do and how he was gonna construct it. That's on him. I, once again, like I said before, that's a temporary works. I'm not, I'm, we don't not, we're not in control of his means and methods of temporary structure. That, the dam is a temporary structure. That was on him to do that.
Who got the Eustace report? Or could you explain to everybody what the Eustace report is, please?
That's a design question for Mr. Tom.
I'm Dean Nicoladis with NY Associates, and when, when we get this contract, there's certain things that we always sub out. That's the geotechnical engineering report, and that's Eustace Engineering did that service. There were numerous reports that they completed during the design phase. We also had a licensed surveyor do the surveying for us.
What year was the Eustace report done?
There are five reports. I don't remember the dates.
Do you know when the latest one was done?
I don't know offhand. I have, I have a stack of them in my office.
Was it prior to 2020?
I really don't know.
Does anybody here know? Nobody know, okay. So did the Eustace report contain anything in it suggesting the ways that the dam should be built in the canal banks?
From my memory, the Eustace report didn't address sand berms. That, that wasn't in their scope of services.
Did it request, did it address the sheet piling method?
The Eustace report did not address the sheet piling, except there was one report where there was an AT&amp;T duct bank that had to be relocated, and they had did, addressed the sheet pile just on that one issue. But it wasn't in their scope to design the temporary sheet pile structures or give any recommendations on that.
Is, is that the same thing as a cofferdam?
The sheet pile is part of the cofferdam, yes.
Um, because I read the Eustace report, and it does reference the cofferdams in there.
There might be some, some, some places where they reference it, but their main scope was to look into the support of the box.
Okay, so aren't these plans, I mean, you, everybody here so far has said this is a complicated project. I don't know why it's so complicated. It's just a little bridge. But wouldn't these things be designed meticulously if it's such a complex project? Wouldn't you have every step of the way, or somebody designed on paper, vetted by all these professionals, and agreed upon the exact method of how this complicated design was gonna be built?
DOTD overlooked the design of the project, and if, by their standards, there's numerous submittals, where numerous engineers with the state give review comments. That's a very long process. There's like a 30, 60, 90 plan in hand, then you go to final plans. The whole time, the city sends these plans to DOTD, gets the comments back from DOTD, which is a group of professionals that are giving us comments and looking at every last aspect, so nothing would go wrong.
So of all of these designers, did everybody agree that the sandbags were the proper way to build the cofferdams?
That was a standard that Jefferson Parish has used, has utilized.
So everybody was in agreement that that was gonna be the proper way to do it?
That was generally agreed, too, that that would be the, the way we would bid the project.
And then that turned out to be a disaster, that the, the builder walked off the project?
I'll turn that back over to the people in charge of the construction, because we're not involved with the actual construction and what. After that, we just, we designed it, and it was.
So did the Eustace people, in their report, they referenced numerous times, all these different instances where they should be reconsulted during the building process, all these different things, building the cofferdams and different processes. Do you know during the building process, when there were these setbacks and changes and such, do you know approximately, just approximately, how many times did somebody go back to them to get their advice on what we were doing?
Eustace's actual contract was over after the design. They did do one.
So the answer is no, even though in that report, that 29-page report that we paid lots of money for, and gave all this advice, we totally ignored it?
It is a common thing that the geotechnics want to stay involved throughout the whole project, but it routinely doesn't always happen that way.
So it didn't at all happen in this case?
Well, the TRS, the, the actual design of the, of the TRS is designed by the contractor, like Arthur Ladette was saying, and that's stamped by a separate Louisiana licensed engineer that works for the contractor. That's the means and method.
So multiple people approved this disaster, and, and so, and you guys were saying you have no, or somebody up here today, it may have been Mr. Schreiner, but I don't want to put words in his mouth, somebody said, y'all have no idea why the hump formed. Is that not because they then went to sheet piles, and then when the sheet pile was left there, they just cut off the top of it, and then the entire project sunk, just like DOTD cautioned it would when they gave their remarks in the design phase, but yet it still went forward? And then when everything sunk and the sheet pile stayed, we had a hump. Is that not what happened?
I know nothing about everything sinking. That's just a general statement. I mean, that's, that's your.
So does anybody here know about the, the sheet pile staying, and that's why we have the hump? Is, is anybody qualified to answer that question?
The temporary sheets that you, you're referring to were part of the cofferdam system, and they have been removed. That, that is, the cofferdam sheets are not there. I do not want to speculate why the hump is there, but it is not, the sheet pile, that sheet pile system that he put in for that cofferdam is no longer there.
But was it there when the hump was formed?
No, because the roadway wasn't there when the sheet pile was there.
Okay, so, okay. So, but nobody here knows why the hump was formed, and we're continuing to build this project with this problem, this big problem in my eyes? I mean, because, you know, shaving off the hump is a cosmetic fix, but now we've structurally changed that part of the bridge, which is adjacent to land, that is tremendously sinking. We have huge problems here. Somebody just said, I don't know if the project's sinking. I can tell you it's sinking. It's sinking a lot, and nobody has paused the project to say, wait a minute, we have this major problem here. We need to stop everything until we figure this out?
So the, the hump that you're referring to, it was shaved down only as a temporary fix. That is not a permanent fix. So it is going to be looked at when the other side of the roadway is open, and it will be addressed then. I cannot speculate on what caused it. I cannot say what's in the ground underneath there. I can tell you that the sheet pile that the contractor used as part of his cofferdam is not there. That was bold. That's all I'm, that's all I can speculate on.
So you, nobody here thinks we should pause this project and figure out what's going on before we move forward?
So since a bump has been shaved, it has been better? And that's all I can tell you. I mean, I, no, it's not paused.
Does any engineer in this room think that's okay? Does, I mean, if you're an engineer in here, can you raise your hand if you have any engineering background, please?
The, the hump, the hump is not on the edge of the box additionally, so I.
I don't care where the hump is. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude to you, but I mean, as a citizen, I'm really sick of this going on. I remember when this was poured in 2019, and they had the 2021 etched into the concrete, thinking, oh my God, this is gonna go on till 2021, and here we're in 2022 with no end in sight? I mean, I'm a little frustrated. I'm aggravated, I'm annoyed, and I don't feel any better about this project now that I'm hearing these non-answers than I did when I walked in the room. In fact, I feel worse.
I can tell you that it will be addressed, and I, it will be on the punch list, and before it is accepted by anyone, the hump will be addressed. That's, that's what I can tell you.
But a punch list is when you go back when something is done, and you touch up paint, or you put caulk. It's not when you address a major structural, potential, structural issue.
It will be, it will be taken care of. That's all, that's all I can tell you. Damn.
How?
We're addressing the bump.
What if it's a major problem? Are you gonna go tear everything back out? What are you gonna do if it is a major problem?
I can't speculate on what, what, what we're gonna do. I, I don't know what happened yet, and I don't have the investigations done. So when we get to that side of the road, I'm sure you can email Mr. Tom or inquire on what it actually was, and, and they, they will be more happy to tell you. I can't tell you what caused it right now. I don't know.
Well, who's the most, thank you, who's the most senior person in this room on this project? Where does the buck stop?
One of these guys would have to tell you that.
If you're the most senior person in the room where the buck stops, can you please tell me who you are? Please stand up. A little real Slim Shady. Oh, thank, okay, Mr. Schreiner, can you, can you please answer my questions?
I think these questions can best be answered by the designer, but truth be known, as, as Arthur has said, we, we don't have an answer on the little bump in the road that was shaved down. We don't think it's the box. We think it's something else. We're not sure what it is, but it, as was said previously, it will be addressed.
What do you think it is?
I, I'm not speculating. No.
Well, you just said, we think we know what it is. Could you just tell us what you think? It doesn't, we won't hold you to it, but what do you think it is?
I'd rather, I'd rather not speculate.
Okay. So do you think it should continue? As the most senior person in the room, do you think this project should continue as is without finding out, since nobody has a clue? Do you think we should pause and get an independent, third-party designer, engineer to come out and just really tell everybody? Because this is gonna probably wind up in litigation, and it would be. in litigation, and it would be so much easier if we had somebody out there now while they can still see what's happening versus the whole thing is now complete and then trying to speculate. It would be so much easier if we knew right now, let's get to the bottom of this. I'm not here to point fingers. I just want to know the truth.
We haven't, we haven't employed a third party at this point.
You have?
Have not.
Why not?
If we see a need, we're still addressing the issue with the bump, and also, you know, the potential changes. If we see a need, we will, we will do that.
How are you, I mean, this is a big deal to us. How are you addressing the issue with the bump?
Well, we, we, there's a temporary fix that has been put in place.
You mean shaving the hump off?
Correct.
That's how you're addressing it?
That's a temporary fix.
Okay, but what, what other steps are you taking is what I'm trying to get at, just to make me feel better?
Oh, I don't know how far we'll go with the investigation. We may do, uh, ground penetrating radar. I don't know. But it will be addressed.
Can you tell me, what are y'all waiting for to address it? Why aren't y'all?
I think, I think Arthur already said, "We're going to wait until we get the other two lanes open," and that way, depending on what we find, if we have to divert traffic or whatever we have to do, we'll be able to do that.
I'm going to stand up. I live, I'm not Duncan Canal, but as I'm concerned, I have a Duncan Street canal at 3015 Utah, and don't look like to me, they know what they doing either with the drainage. They've been working on that drainage ever since last year, and I reported it to code enforcement. They came out there Monday. I took and walked from 31st Street, 30th Street Yon. I said, "This drainage y'all have down here, the water done cut up drain of its own. It's not even going in the drainage. It just uncut, running through it, uh, running just, uh, in its own way." Then I came home this afternoon, the pipe broke on the sidewalk, water running everywhere, and I told these gentlemen, 10 of them was out there, I said, "This sand y'all have here, it's not solving the problem." I said, "When it dry, it's running everywhere," and boy, as I'm concerned, don't nobody must don't know what they doing to fix the drainage problem, because I got one at 3015 Utah that I've been dealing with ever since last year. Dealing with it today, and I'm very upset about it. I am very upset. I told the gentleman, I said, "Look, this lot belongs to me, but here, when I got company over, simple as my children and grandchildren, they can't even park in this lot, and what this lot belongs to me." And here me tried to park in it this afternoon, because I had somebody out painting my house, and they was in my driveway, the two, their vehicles painting my house. I gets over in the sand and got stuck. Had to get somebody to pull the car out. The more I try to go forward, the deeper I got in it, the deeper it got. Try to go backward, I had to get someone, a truck to come pull me out that sand. I am 81 years old, and I go to work every day, and you come home, you got to tussle and work with all this, and the sand, they got a half wheel in my driveway. I had to go out there and show them, "What y'all scoop all this sand out my driveway?" It's blowing everywhere. When they serving no problem, we gonna put some dirt there. So they was out there all walking, 10 of them. Now today, I got a water problem, cold water. A line broke on the sidewalk. So talking about a Duncan Street canal, I got one at 3015 Utah you all. Now you can come over and see it.
I think-
And I said, "Come out there and spray some green." I said, "What is that y'all's green y'all spraying out there?" "Oh, it gonna grow to grass." I said, "Why you can't get some grass patches and put there?" Now, I'm telling you, they, somebody know what they doing.
We'd be glad to look at that. I'm not sure what, you know, what caused your damage.
I, well, they need to get someone out there, because I can go further with this. You hear me? I've been there, why, I'm 45 years, and I go to work every day.
Yeah, we'd be glad to take a look at that. We have your address.
Excuse me?
So we'd be glad to take a look at it.
Well, I hope they do. Code enforcement, I don't report it to them. They don't do anything either. They sent 10 gentlemen out. They walking like they, like they parading or something other. And it don't, it take a lot to get me upset, but I'm at my limit. Thank you for listening to me.
Uh, Tom, uh, let me switch gears for a second. Who is our consultant on the job? You mentioned a consultant that the city contracted with. Who are they?
Uh, Richard C. Lambert's doing the construction, engineering, and inspection.
That was the consultant you referred to earlier?
Maybe, I suppose. We talked about both of them.
Well, that's what made me ask you who the consultant is, since you talked about both of them. But that in your mind is the consultant?
Yeah, they're consultant during construction. That's correct.
Uh, have we considered shooting the elevation of the box culvert and comparing it to the original plans?
Yes, we've done that.
And what did you find out?
Well, there's, uh, we've, I think since last May, we found very little movement of the box. Um, it's, it's still being investigated.
Okay, so that was a month ago that it was shot?
Since last, since last May, May of last year.
Okay. And the hump developed after last May, correct?
Yes.
Has it been reshot, or is that something you're going to do?
I don't believe that hump specifically was shot.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. So my question is, once the project is complete, um, all the checklists have been completed, is there a warranty period if something goes wrong? Is the company responsible for repairing whatever happens?
Typically, a one-year warranty period.
At no cost to the city?
Correct. If something's found during that period, yeah, they'd be responsible. The contractor would be responsible for remedying whatever, whatever happens.
Tom, as the structure stands now, is it structurally sound?
Everyone has looked at it. Has no issue with that structure. We have no reason to believe that there's an issue.
At the present time, right?
Yeah, we've had Richard Lambert's people on there. They've inspected it. All the steel that was placed and the concrete was inspected by Richard Lambert, and everything is in place as it should.
Thanks.
I guess, I guess we have all the questions answered, addressed. No, they were invited. They decided they didn't want to attend.
... lost in the city, whatever the overrides are, they don't show up. How's that possible? How is it wasn't mandated that they had to show up today?
All we can do is invite them. It's up to them to-
Right, and all we can do is pay extra money to the city. Okay, let me, let me say this. Do you think the mayor or this administration wants to be dealing with this? Why would they walk off the job, still have a contract, now they don't show up to a meeting, then they want us to pay half the costs? It's a bad reflection on everybody in the city and the citizens as well. How do they not show up?
That's his decision. You can't force him.
I know it's, I know it's his decision, but aren't you the project manager? You oversee that?
My role isn't exactly project manager. We have other people all performing different roles, and we have Richard Lambert during construction performing most of, most of what's going on.
Tom, I'm not, I'm not trying to say anything about you. I'm just saying, they're not accountable. Who are they accountable to?
The contractor?
Who's the construction company accountable to?
Well, if they have to perform, they have to, they have to build the project in accordance with the project plan. They have to build it in the timeframe given them, or else they have to have a good reason why they haven't done it. So we haven't resolved all those things. Yes, there's extra time on the job, and that'll all be resolved after the project.
Time sheets where they weren't on the job. So, you know, the two years that, um, they projected, this whole, this whole last year, maybe they weren't even on the job a year, and I don't know why we'd have to pay any additional monies.
It's not a calendar day job. It's a working day job, so if they're not, I mean, if there's a reason that they're, they won't be charged a day, then there's, you know, then they won't be charged a day. Remember, we had the issues as discussed at the beginning of the meeting, and I know you're shaking your head, but that's, those were real things that happened. Contractor lost employee due to COVID during that time. Obviously, they have more employees, but yeah, it was a serious thing, and we had, had the hurricanes as discussed, and we had the issue where the contractor didn't feel safe in the canal. So all of that took time, took months to resolve that.
As far as not being safe in the canal, that should have been thought of way before the project started. So that's just my opinion.
That's up to the contractor to decide if it's safe or not.
At what point do we find the construction company, Hard Rock, if that's who it is, incompetent on the project? And what time, at what point do we stop it and then bring someone else in to complete the project and then build them for the cost of the other construction company? So at what point will we stop the project with this current construction company?
We're beyond that point. The box is complete. The whole box is, is completely built out. Contractor's working on the inside of the box right now, cleaning it, and I think Arthur went over this already. Uh, once that's complete, then, you know, he'll go back to, to filling on top of the box, on the southern half of the box, and building the other two lanes of roadway.
They put a new box. They put a new box. They got to put new drainage in Lincoln Manor. I live in the Lincoln Manor subdivision. Okay, and I live on Utah 3015. They put a new box there, and if that water is running in that box, I'm running in there. You have what it's, you know what? It done cut a whole drain and going where it want to run, and they even running in the, in the drain that got there. It's just a waste of time.
We can take a look at that.
They need to take up, they need, they need to fix, because it ain't fixed. If they can't fix the little thing in a block long, they can't fix Duncan Canal either. Now, trust me.
Understood.
Mr. Shrinor, I don't, I don't know if you're, this is a question for you. I don't think it is, but I'll ask. Um, do they have a performance bond in place? And if so, what are our options with that?
He has a performance bond in place, but I don't think we're at that point where we would entertain calling their bond.
Hi, uh, excuse me. Performance and payment bonds are statutorily required, so there is a performance bond in place.
So, I mean, they've walked off the job, and it's now going on double, if not double, how long the project should take. I mean, what is it going to take for y'all to think that it's at that point?
So, uh, under the contract, the DOTD specifications, there are different requirements for making a performance bond, one of which contractor default at this point in the project. Three weeks left, wouldn't be the time.
Can you, I'm sorry, now that you're up here, I wanted to ask you this earlier. Um, can you tell me why we have your firm an attorney, an outside attorney, um, firm involved in this project? Like, at what point were you called to be involved? Was it from the beginning, or were you called in at some point? Like, why, you know, basically, why do we have an outside attorney? And what's your role right now, please?
That's a question for me. Thank you, Peter. How you doing, Ms. Stacy?
Hey, Ms. Hall.
Good. We ask, sometimes we assign different projects to different specialties, and Peter has a specialty in construction that I do not, so this is why it's assigned to him at this time. And I have, as the interim city attorney, I have a right to assign any city case that I feel needs specialties, and there are a lot of specialties that go to outside councils, but we do not have in-house.
Okay, understandable. Um, so when was Mr. Peter called in on this job? At what point?
I cannot answer that question. Whenever I deem necessary, I bring him in.
No, I'm, no, and I'm not saying, I'm just saying, when was he called in on this particular project? At what point?
Again, I cannot discuss that because it might be something that, a reason why we brought him in, so I'd rather not say that at this time.
Are you saying that's privileged information?
Privileged information, but also there's a reason, yes, privileged information. We'll leave it that way.
I'm sorry, which, which privilege are you asserting?
I do not have to answer that. Again, this, this forum is not about that. This is about Duncan Canal. I answered Ms. Stacy's question, that we brought in outside counsel for a specialty, a specialty issue, and that this is his wheelhouse. So that's why we brought him in.
I understand that.
I'm not here going to defend any kind of privilege or anything like that. I'm not discussing that. That's not why we're here. We're here for Duncan Canal.
I understand that, but I think the question was, when was he brought on? You didn't know, so let's ask Mr. Thrifley.
He is not going to answer that question, because I'm not waving, we're not waving the privilege.
No.
I'm sorry?
What is privileged about when he was first consulted and brought in?
That is, that's irrelevant to this discussion. We're here to discuss and answer all your questions regarding the Duncan Canal, not ask to which attorneys representing the city and all your rights regarding this project. So you'd want as many attorneys on to protect the city, right?
I don't think anybody complained about him being brought in. We're just asking, when was he first consulted and brought in?
I cannot discuss, I cannot discuss that at this time. It's a public forum. It is not the time and the place we can discuss that.
I'm going to shift gears. This is for one of the engineers, or maybe for Mr. Shrinor, and others who have been looking into this know more about it than I do, so if I'm incorrect about something, I hope someone will correct me, but it's my understanding that, that early on in the design phase of this, that both the parish engineers and engineers from DOTD were making suggestions that, that either the Hard Rock or the city chose to ignore, chose not to incorporate. Um, and that among those was the discussion of whether to use, use pilings or not, or whether to have the box culvert just sitting on the bottom of the canal, and whether it will then start sinking, and if it starts sinking, is the bridge going to be resting on the box culvert, so the bridge will then start sinking too? Or is the bridge on pilings? Can someone elaborate on that and explain what that deal is?
The box is designed to be ground-supported, which is the common way to do it, uh, all over Jefferson Parish, as was previously discussed. There's really not a bridge anymore. The box, the actually roadway surface is on top of the box culvert structure. It is called a bridge, but there's no separate bridge and separate box. It's a concrete box which has a roadway surface on top, and it's all ground-supported. There's no piles. The Solz report, there is a, in the Solz report, that every, everything that's not pile-supported does subside. This has to be within, you know, normal range. I mean, the whole city's, I mean, everything's sinking. Structures sink, the city's sinking, ground sink, just the way it is.
Does that mean then that that bridge is going to be slowly sinking so that it's- Does that mean then that that bridge is going to be slowly sinking so that instead of a, a hump, we're going to have a, a, a suck and a depression?
I'm not a tier technical engineer, but the way I understand it, there's long-term settlement which is projected over 20 years or so. So it's never something that's supposed to happen really fast.
Anybody here from DOTD right now? Um, didn't you guys recommend, or, I, I, let me ask, did you guys recommend, truly trying to seek, did you guys recommend that the city maybe should consider building a bridge on pile-supported culvert system? Did y'all not recommend that maybe they should just build a regular bridge to avoid all these problems?
I'm the area engineer for East Bank of Jefferson Parish. Um, you know, the, the choice between a bridge and a culvert's always a design. You're gonna have, you know, just because one person and one entity recommended a certain one. I mean, it's, it's no right or wrong. There's just as many bridges in the parish as box culverts. And one advantage that, for the box culvert here, I believe the city preferred was the, the landscaping ability around it, you know, it, it provides more ground, you know, when you have a bridge, you have to contend with the slope right at the canal. It would allow for a wider footprint and, you know, more aesthetics and, let's say, room for future landscaping, sidewalks to go over it as opposed to walking right next to traffic. I mean, there's advantages to every design, you know, but it's not, there's no right or wrong and it's, you know, hindsight's 20/20. Just because you choose Plan A and you had some issues, well, then it's easy to say maybe Plan B would have worked, but that's not the case here.
Do you think in this situation, it's a design flaw or a construction issue that we're dealing with?
In what way? What flaw? What, what are we dealing with?
The unknown cause of the hump, for one.
Well, the hump's not related to the box. It's been determined it's outside the box.
Okay.
It's some sort of differential settlement in this area, something didn't sink and they're gonna excavate and solve it and, you know, it's, there's things under the ground that don't settle. And that's common, you can't always pull, you abandon a bridge or something, you have to cut piles off two, three feet below and you, it, it shows up way down the road. But there's, the, the hump is not related to the box at all, it's just some kind of differential settlement that we have to identify.
Okay, so are you the, um, DOTD person that's out there every day? Was that you or?
No, no, the daily inspection is done by Richard Lambert Consultants. The fed, the money, it's the fed, federal money for the bridge program. Um, maybe someone can help me if I say something is wrong, but the, the money comes, federal money comes through DOTD and it's 50/50 in this case with Kenner. And, and the, the contract, the design is through Kenner and the contract for the daily inspection is a project engineer and multiple inspectors on site every day that would supplement, that would do a typical state job. Those people work for DOTD, but when it's a, not a DOTD road, the city doesn't have a team of inspectors like that, it's, it's, uh, contracted out.
Do you know if anything, or do y'all have an opinion on it? If the, um, conditions were unsafe, that the contractor had grounds, um, walk off?
No, I, I wish we wouldn't use that word, I think we all agree, we shouldn't have said, walked off. You know, it's his means and methods and it's a complicated system that you have to design, you have to procure material, you have to put it in place and, you know, materials a problem in construction right now to begin with. But they, they designed one system, the Coffe Dam system protects the immediate work area and the dams are more of a global protection of the whole site. And they weren't happy with the, you know, neither one was performing and he re, you know, regrouped and redesigned. He had to hire a firm to design it, he had to, you know, procure the material. And that, that was the couple-month delay in the very beginning, but, I mean, the work and, didn't stop after that. So.
The, um, the sandbag method, was that the original plan from the get-go with them? Is that what they?
Yeah, like they said, it's typical in Jefferson Parish canals to use a, it's a sand dam, there's no bags, it's just a big amount of sand that's designed to wash away in a, in heavy storms. And then, you know, we, when that happens, you know, we should say a little more about all these rain events. That when the parish, when they get that alarm at certain elevation, they have to remove that sand. And there's no time to pick up your job site. So it's a big, big loss of time to the contract. Imagine having your whole house framed up and a flood comes through, you know, your forms go away, he's gotta clean up the mud, he might have steel, but no concrete poured at that day. He's gotta get all that dirt out of the job site. It's a, it's a real mess to clean up for a, a storm that, you know, you may not even notice. Could be two inches of rain, but it, the criteria was to get the canal open, which is, you know, very important around here. So all those delays, it was rainy summer, really, really set you back.
Anyway, I'm gonna be at 3015 Utah Street and if they don't fix that, oh, I know what else to do. Believe it or not, I ain't jumped off a ton of trucks. And the day I am upset, because I came home to see that I had water running, a pipe broke. And you know what? And not only that, tree, they done made the situation worse than it is. I haven't got flooded since, uh, Katrina. You hear what I say? Katrina. I come home, they got water running, like somebody got a bucket pointed, pointed down there. Plus, I can't even get in the lot next to me. And I am very disturbed and upset. And it takes a lot to make me upset and disturbed. But they better fix this problem. If they don't, I know what else to do about it. I called code enforcement, they sent out there, them peoples walked out there, 10 of them, up and down Utah Street like they was in a parade. I even got out there with them and walked in, I said, do y'all know what y'all doing? I said, y'all know what the fuck saying? You talking about the water washing it, the way the wind blows it away too, like a snowstorm out there, you can't even see. The water don't have to wash away, the wind blows it away, cause it needs some dirt out there and, and some grass down. And where I live, I'm not brash. I keeps it up and it turn, looks good. The lot to me and where I live. If you think I, if you think not, come out there and check it out. And plus, I'm gonna call the code enforcement again.
Mr. Tom? Sir? Do you have a plan that you're gonna have, um, afterwards? You wanna critique this project from start to finish? So where we can sit back and learn from mistakes? And maybe at the next time, we can plan better? And that way, we can start recognizing some of these problems, be proactive, some of this, that way we can do a better job the next time?
I think everyone learns from every project they're involved with. And at, at, this project will have a final change order, reconcile all of the quantities, all, all the issues with the contractor, if he's contending, he, he thinks he needs more money, that'll be addressed. All, all these things will be addressed and there's a lot to be learned here and for everyone, contractor, designers and the city.
Yes, sir, but are you gonna put out a report?
All the, yeah, all this.
A written report saying from front, this is what we could have done, that way so everybody could see, you know, what actually was done, mistakes made, corrected, and just the next time. This is not going to be the last bridge that we're gonna build. And when we do, we want to make sure that we're going to do it right, or at least better the second.
There'll be a final report on that and all that information will be available to whoever wants to see it.
Thank you, sir.
Any more questions? All right, I want to thank everyone for coming. Mayor, you have anything to say? Appreciate all the questions that you had and, um, have a good evening.